Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the...
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. How about the minutes from September 6th?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I'd like a motion of 20 minutes of September 6th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Grisgoviac, second by Rayrower to approve the minutes from the September 6th, 2022 meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have six items on our consent agenda. The first one, which is actually item two on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-90 calling for a public hearing to vacate a right-of-way easement, 12307 Wedgewood Drive. The property located at 12307 Wedgewood Drive was built in 1969, and as development progressed around the property, the right-of-way was never adjusted to conform to the new streets. The vacation is needed considered, or I'm sorry, is being considered to rectify lot lines before the current owner puts the house on the market. The city will need new drainage and utility easements around the property limits, and an easement agreement will be brought to council for acceptance at a future date. So the first item here then is to adopt Resolution 22-90, which calls for a public hearing on October 18th, 2022, for vacation on a right-of-way easement for 12307 Wedgewood Drive Northwest. Item two on our consent agenda is to approve a site lease with Dish Network Hanson Water Tower. We're looking to approve the site lease agreement with Dish Network for a telecommunications facility at the Hanson Water Tower and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement and any necessary documents. Item three on the consent agenda, which is again item four, is to approve the waiver of the fireworks display license fee for Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. The Community Strength Foundation has submitted an application to conduct a fireworks display as part of the holiday tree lighting event being held at the Boulevard Park on December 3rd, 2022. So we're looking to approve the waiver of $110 license fee for the fireworks display as part of the holiday tree lighting event being held at the Boulevard Park on December 3rd, 2022. Item four on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 22-91, accepting a DWI grant from the state of Minnesota. In 2020, we were awarded a grant by the Minnesota Department of Transportation to fund a full-time officer to enforce DWI laws, and the grant was authorized and funded for up to one fiscal year with the possibility of extensions. The grant is funded by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Federal guidelines require the grant money to be spent on projects to reduce DWI incidents. Because of this, the officer can only be funded for the enforcement of laws prohibiting driving while impaired if the officer is called to or responds to an incident other than an alcohol-related driving offense. The time spent on non-DWI-related enforcement exceeding 15 successive minutes must be paid for by the agency. The officer works peak nights and times when drinking and driving occurs. Progress reports will be required made to the OTS. And recently, the OTS notified Coon Rapids that they have approved grant funding for the position from October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023, to a maximum of $124,998.45 for salary, benefits, and DWI conference registration fees. The 2022 federal fiscal year ends September 30th, 2023. The Coon Rapids Police Department has developed a work plan and budget approved by the OTS, and the award covers a full-time sworn officer's salary and fringe benefits. So we're looking to approve Resolution 22-91, authorizing 2022/2023 agreement with the Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety, accepting a grant to fund a full-time officer through September 30th, 2023. Next item, item six, which is our fifth and fifth of six items on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-92, appointing David Eeny to the Historical Commission. David Eeny has attended two Historical Commission meetings and submitted an application expressing interest in serving on the Historical Commission. After meeting with Mr. Eeny, the Historical Commission recommends his appointment to the Historical Commission. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-92, appointing David Eeny to the Historical Commission. And item seven, which is the sixth and final item on the consent agenda, is to approve HRA and trust agreements. We have too many acronyms. This one overlapped. I went, what? This trust holds the city's health reimbursement account, HRA contributions, for eligible current city employees, past employees, and retirees. In 2021, the city transferred this trust from U.S. Bank to Further. Further has made an operational decision to no longer administer HRA plans. Through a request for proposal process, the city has elected a new vendor, BRI, as its HRA administrator. So we're looking to authorize the city manager to execute agreements related to HRA administration and the related trusts, including one VEBA-directed trust agreement, two PRA adoption agreement, three HRA adoption agreement, four other related ancillary documents as required or deemed necessary by the city manager. And that was our final item on the consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move approval and adoption of the various items on the consent agenda, including the alphabet soup about the ARHRA.
A second.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Carlson. David Eeny attending the Historical Commission. You guys were just having a great old time the other night, watching old slide projector pictures and they get popcorn. No wonder he wants to join.
Mayor, thank you. There are a couple of spots open on the Historical Commission if anyone else would like to join us.
All right, all right. And this isn't bait and switch. They're always fun, right?
They are. This one was especially fun with the slideshow and the popcorn.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are up to item eight under Old Business, to consider adoption of Ordinance 2263, amending Chapter 5-200, alcoholic beverages. Ms. Lenzmeyer, do you want to go through this, or do you want me to read these things I have highlighted?
Mr. Mayor, the highlights would be just fine with me. This is an adoption. We introdued it at the last meeting, and this would just add two types of licensing that are now approved by the state to our code to allow those types of licenses should anyone be interested.
Okay. So now it now allows a municipality to issue a cocktail room license to the holder of a distilled spirits manufacturer license, and this authorizes on sale of distilled liquor produced by the distillery for consumption on the premises of or adjacent to one distillery location owned by the distiller. The new law raised the 20,000 barrel limit in Minnesota statutes to 150,000 barrels. So cities may get requests for licenses to sell growlers from much larger breweries. And then additionally, the new statute now allows a brewer licensed under Minnesota statutes that produces 7,500 barrels or less of malt liquor annually to be issued a license by a municipality for off-sale of up to 128 ounces per customer per day in any packaging conforming to state and federal regulation. And the ordinance amendment now creates a new license where a brewer who produces less than 7,500 barrels per year can sell, in addition to growlers, up to 128 ounces to a customer per day in packaging approved by the state, like 12-ounce cans or 16-ounce cans. Now, that was the part I didn't catch. I didn't realize you could only buy like six packs up to a max of 128 ounces. You can't buy more than that, like going out of town or something.
That's correct.
From the brewery.
From the brewery.
And why am I looking at you when I'm thinking about this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2263, amending Chapter 5-200, alcoholic beverages as it relates to the types of licenses allowed.
I'll second. Motion by Geisler, a second by Hernandez Jr. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider introduction of an ordinance regulating chloride reduction. Mr. Hammer, did you want to hit the highlights on this, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. As discussed briefly in work session last week, this is in response to an MPCA requirement related to our stormwater MS4 permit. There were much more items that could be included. We wanted to start with those that we felt could be enforceable. So we're really focusing now on the bulk storage of deicing chemicals, locations where they should and shouldn't, how do we protect those from getting into the storm sewer. That really touches on what this is. This is the introduction, and we are required to have this completed by, I believe it's mid-October to be in compliance with our permitting.
So the folks that really need to know about this would be like a large entity that may have a pile of their own salt for their parking lot use, right?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on this? If not, we will consider the ordinance requiring chloride reduction introduced. On to item 10. Consider introduction of an ordinance regulating cannabinoid products. Cannabinoid, that's an interesting word. Or parentheses, THC edibles. Ms. Lenzmeyer, do you want to?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, before you is an introduction of an ordinance to regulate the new THC edibles, as we call them, that were approved by the legislature. As we discussed at the work session last week, there is not much in way of local or state oversight into the manufacturing. So we believe that staff believes we should have some regulation, which we discussed, the ordinance changes that we discussed, some of the things that Councilmember Johnson brought were incorporated into the draft that is before you, and we would recommend an introduction. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. It's an introduction only. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Lenzmeyer? Hearing none, then we will consider the ordinance regulating cannabinoid products, THC elables, edibles. Elables? I don't even know what I said. THC edibles introduced.
Thank you.
And item 11 is to consider a proposal and standard agreement for contract services with Bloom Technology for audio/video equipment. That's still what AV stands for, right? Audiovisual or audio/video? Equipment installation at Coon Rapids Fire Station 3. And this truly was in the budget for that station, huh? Okay. I kept going, wow, another one, another page, another page. Mr. Stemwaddle, this says we submitted it for you, but I see Chief Piper's here also.
I would defer to Chief Piper to give you the summary.
Chief Piper? Councilmembers, excuse me, this proposal is to do the audiovisual for the fire station. And just looking at the summary on the back page, the total is $191,000. And just starting with the head end, that's kind of what is the gatekeeper for all the video and audio, and you could select different things at different TVs and all that. You notice that the classroom EOC portion is at $83,000. As you're well aware of, a high priority of ours in the fire department is to take our training to a new level. You've heard me say that many times over the last however many years, and this allows us in the training room to have many options with the cameras there. For example, I'm looking at maybe down the road, various training evolutions, classroom evolutions. The other two stations maybe could even stay in their own stations because of the technology that is currently available with the cameras and et cetera. I also point out that it says EOC. As you may or may not remember, it is the fire department's emergency operations center. In other words, if there's a large fire event or a storm with multiple calls, we'd be operating out of that room. And also, as you're well aware of, it's the backup city EOC. So in the event that the EOC here at City Hall was unavailable, this is where you and the city manager and others would work with all of the people in the city to operate. That's why that's probably, you know, quite a bit of money in that room. The breakout room, that's off of the classroom EOC. Again, it's to be able to do meetings, tie in with cameras, tie in with the laptops, tie in with the phone system and all that. The US Digital, that's how we get our calls. They come electronically from the Anoka Dispatch Center, and that's a big part of this. The US Digital that we switched to a few years ago allows us to get the calls quicker, more accurately. And then also, on a related note, the new technology also allows us, for example, sleep deprivation is a big deal in the fire service right now. And in other words, if we have four people working at this station, if it's in a medical emergency, the two bedrooms that house the firefighters responding on medicals would get alerted. The other two firefighters would be able to sleep, and our goal is as time goes on, you rotate depending on the shift. So not everybody gets up every night, right? So that's the US Digital portion of it. Wells and Fitness Rooms kind of speak for themselves. Day Room, that's where the firefighters eat, and that's their downtime at night where they can watch TV or whatever they choose to. So that's kind of a overview of it. If you have any specific questions, I'll try to answer them, but Assistant Chief Johnston was real involved in this. He's up at an emergency management conference today as we speak, in fact, but I'm kind of filling in for him on this.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Questions for Chief Piper?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I make a motion. We approve the proposal from Bloom Technology for the installation of audio/video systems at Fire Station 3 and authorize appropriate staff to execute a standard agreement for contract services for the project.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'd just make a couple of questions. It seems like we didn't go out for bid for safety. Well, reading this, you know, for me, I would look at safety would be something that would be from a network perspective or intrusion or something that could affect the functionality for this. I don't see that in this. So I think it could have gone to bid. I also was, I'd asked a couple of other questions. I didn't see any specifications that the person was bidding to, so, you know, and knowing somewhat of the technology that's in here, I think we probably could have done better. But I also know that these kinds of things, lead time is 10 to 14 months. And so if we are going to put AV equipment in, which we obviously do need to do that, it makes sense to go forward with this. I just would appreciate us taking a more judicious approach in the future for things and looking at can we get, making sure that we have clear specifications for what we're trying to achieve, to make sure that whatever comes in is meeting it and that we are doing our due diligence to bid out the components, that we could potentially get much cheaper than what we got in this bid.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor, Councilmember Geisler makes a fair point about sort of the security aspect, because I know that word was specifically used in the agenda, and maybe that was the wrong choice of word. I think primarily what Assistant Chief Johnston was looking for was related to reliability and functionality. Sort of the technology being used or being proposed here is very similar to that of the fire station in Burnsville, similar project, similar scope for technology. Our staff had toured that a number of times and, you know, found that to be very helpful when, you know, researching this project. So it's more from that standpoint of this is kind of what we want. Okay, yeah, that works, let's get that too. The other piece about it is this was on the state contract, and given that this vendor was a reliable one that had been, has worked with several cities on similar projects in the past, I think was sort of the, one of the leading reasons why the fire department was interested in working with them. So just wanted to provide that information.
Thank you. Mr. Broden?
One piece on the cooperative, when we use that state contract, the stake goes through a process, a competitive bid process to create that list. So, I mean, in some ways, they've done the homework for us or done the work for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider Resolution 22-66 sub-8, accepting plans and specifications for public works remodel and authorized solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, council, we've finally been able to rework some things. Costs were high, as they are all over the place, so our initial budget didn't appear to be able to support the entire project. So what we've tried to do is break it down into a few different phases and addendums, which gives us the opportunity to really see what it's going to cost and then also award contracts that would remain within our budget if we have to go that route. So this is our opportunity to go out in bid. It's the office space, it's improving the security at the front entryway such that there's controlled access there, which doesn't exist today. And really just bringing this thing up to date and getting new technology spaces in for leads and our employees that are working in the facility. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this before we go to bid.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-66 sub-8, accepting plans and specifications for the public works remodel and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Rayrower. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider approval of a letter of intent with the National Sports Center. Mr. Stemwaddle.
Sure, Mayor and council, I can hit the highlights on this one. Since 1997, the city has been a partner with the National Sports Center at the Super Rink. We were one of the four original partners that came together to help fund the Super Rink. The Super Rink, you might already be aware, but is a entity of the state of Minnesota, administered through the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission. And we had a 25-year agreement for one rink essentially at the Super Rink where we controlled the scheduling of ice during the prime season, essentially September through March. But that agreement is coming to an end sooner than later. And so what the National Sports Center wants to do is seek out new partners for a new 20-year agreement, and they're asking those partners to sign onto this letter of intent to indicate their strong interest in being that partner. It is non-binding, but would essentially say, yes, we're very interested. It would help them secure some funding for capital improvements and needs that they have on those original four rinks, because now that they're 25 years old, they're starting to show a lot of wear and tear over there. Primarily what the city has done with their rink is pass those ice scheduling needs onto the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association. And annually, at least in the last five to 10 years, our association's used somewhere between 325 to 350 hours of ice at the Coon Rapids Rink. And so as we're moving forward, the conversation has evolved to where we don't need an entire rink to supplement those needs that can't be serviced at our own ice center here in town, but really focusing on what those additional ice hour needs are. And so have targeted right now about 325 hours worth of need for the next 20 years. It doesn't mean that the association couldn't get more time, it's just that we would have sort of first billing in priority over those 325 hours, and then beyond that, they'd kind of have to be more in competition with other associations across their eight rinks. And really, that there's a lot of opportunity between the eight rinks at the Super Rink to get that ice time. If we move forward with this and sign the letter tonight, essentially what it's doing is providing that interest, the indication of interest. We would have to come to a formal agreement with the National Sports Center for what that looks like. We would be sort of quasi-committing ourselves at this point to $300,000 of capital contributions that would be split up, first payment in 2023, second payment in 2024. Again, those specifics will be stipulated in the final agreement. And then the final piece that I'll mention is we would want to have some additional conversations with the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association about their long-term needs and their ability to partner in this agreement. I've had some, you know, very sort of high-level conversations with their president here in the last several months about if this is still something the association needs, and they strongly feel that they do have additional ice needs there, which is a benefit to our ice center because we're, you know, at capacity during those prime hours. So really, we wouldn't be able to bring them into the fold necessarily without supplanting some other user at the ice arena. So that's what the letter is doing. If council moves forward with this, what you would see in the next several months is some of those detailed plans related to an agreement, those additional conversations with the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, and I would expect that we'd really want to get that hammered out here in the next three to four months.
So if, what we're kind of agreeing here in concept then is $300,000 towards capital improvements next year?
Starting in next year, it'll be January of 2023, which we did include in the preliminary 2023 budget, which won't be approved until December, but it is at least included in the facilities construction fund portion of the budget as of today.
Okay.
And ultimately, if for some reason over the next several months, things went sideways, this letter, you know, we could just indicate that we're no longer interested, they would sell that portion of the ice to another partner. And my understanding is there are other partners who would probably scoop that time up pretty quick, but as an original partner, they gave us first rate of refusal on whether or not we wanted to be a partner at whichever level we basically ascribe to.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Stemwaddle on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Just a clarification on what you just said. So our original agreement ran for 20 years and expires at the end of 2023?
Expires at the end of 2023.
Okay. And so our new agreement with rights to 325 hours would begin in 2023, before the term?
It would be January 1, 2024.
Oh, 2024?
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be...
Technically. But we'd want to establish that agreement in these next several months. You know, they're asking for a payment in January of '23 to start those capital improvements, especially during this offseason between '23 and '24, but we wouldn't want to make that contribution until that final agreement is done. So my goal would be in the next three to four months to get that agreement done such that they could receive payment. If for some reason that payment gets pushed back, that doesn't harm us at all, it's really more in their court than ours.
And then for our $300,000 contribution toward capital improvements, other than the rights to 325 hours of prime ice time, what other benefits to the city?
That's the primary benefit, is that we can provide that additional ice time and not have to try to fulfill that at our ice arena. Council may recall, several years ago, we did look at what it would take to enclose the outdoor rink or build a new rink.
Right.
And we're talking somewhere, you know, at that time, I think it was $5 million plus to enclose the existing outdoor rink and probably closer to $10 million to build a new rink. So this really, I think, saves the city money in the aspect of we were able to sort of provide for facility use at another rink without necessarily having to build our own. One thing that did come up through Coon Rapids Youth Hockey that made sense to me and actually communicated to the National Sports Center, and they were open to, is that there might be some sort of prorated out clause that if eight years from now, the city decided to enclose a rink, that we could get a prorated amount of our $300,000 back and put it toward our own facility. The association didn't, just didn't want to be locked in that if future conversations, well, no, we don't want to build that because, you know, we've got your ice time over here, whatever those future things might dictate, and that's, you know, those are more hypothetical than anything at this point. But the National Sports Center was open to the idea of if for some reason we wanted to back out, they would sell the rest of the contract to a new partner and we'd get our portion back.
And then one more follow-up. With the 325 hours of ice time, in our original agreement, we had more than that. We didn't use it all, right?
Correct.
So we could resell it or anything like that. Do we, will the same thing occur with this? And I guess with the 325 hours of ice time, do we get a preferred rate on those prime ice hours that we can pass along to, say, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association?
There really isn't a reduction in the rate. Essentially, what you get is dedicated time during those prime hours. So everybody in the season wants Saturdays, Sundays, and Monday through Friday from 5:30 till 9:30. So those are the hours that you would get dedicated to you. To the extent, 325 hours won't be a problem for them to use, but to the extent that they're not able to use all of those, they could just sell them. Basically, what they, as a scheduler at the sports center asks the scheduler at Coon Rapids Hockey, well, what hours do you need and when do you need them? In the past, we've had, we had 2,080 hours, I think, in contract. We didn't need even a quarter of that. And so they would offer them, you know, take the ice that you want, they could pick all the best ice out of that 2,080 hours, and then the rest, they would just sell off to other associations or private users. There was a clause, you might recall, that was triggered during the pandemic where, you know, we were sort of on the hook for unused hours. In this case, we'd have to figure it out in the final agreement and potentially the agreement with Coon Rapids Youth Hockey, that if for some reason they weren't able to sort of perform on their end, they might be responsible for it versus the... that if for some reason they weren't able to sort of perform on their end, they might be responsible for it versus the city. But it's such a much smaller amount that the exposure is pretty little.
Right. Thanks for answering all the questions. I think it's pretty well thought out. It's got my support.
Thank you. All right, if you also have any questions, Mr. Stemwiddel? All right, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion. We authorize the city manager to sign the letter of intent between the city of Coon Rapids and the National Sports Center.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Ray Rower. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I guess.
Councilmember Geisler?
You know, I think to Mr. Stemwiddel's point, I mean, it's a letter of intent. You know, we need to be looking at that. And then I really want to make sure that we're continuing those conversations with the youth hockey and and make sure that that there is a partnership there of, you know, that it's not just the city paying for them to have the right for their time, that that they have some some incentive to partner for us to fully execute the agreement.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. We are at the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Are you here for open mic? No, all right. And I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. I would love to know how the Love My Pet Fair went Saturday because I did not make it. Anybody there? Mr. Stemwiddel?
Mayor and council, I'll comment on there. I did, I did stop in for a while. It was slow to start, it sounds like. It wasn't there at the beginning. But then, as the weather improved during the day, people showed up. And so I was talking with Stephanie Ring, who helps coordinate that event. She was very happy with the outcome and the involvement in that. And there were certainly a lot of people there with their well-behaved, mostly dogs, but some cats. And I was able to catch the parade and the costume contest, and it was all well-received, so.
Excellent. I imagine, I imagine we'll get a list of sponsors to thank maybe at the next meeting or something. I know typically we get a list of sponsors. Okay, other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I may toss it over to Chief Piper, because not this Saturday, but next Saturday, October first, is our fire department annual open house. And so we don't have a meeting between now and then. So do you want to give us an update of what your plan is for the open house?
Sure, Councilmember Geisler, councilmembers, thank you. October first, we're doing it over at Sand Creek Park. If you remember, a year ago, we moved it there with the COVID issues, and we found it was such a success to consolidate all of our resources at one location. See, I'm from, I believe, at ten to twelve, we'll be doing it, and all the resources will be there. And a variety of demonstrations, and like I say, we look forward to it. And like anything else, we we hope the weather is good because obviously there's no backup plan to that. But then the reality was, even at the fire stations back in the day, if if the rain hit and you had to move all the trucks inside, it really kind of took away from the event. I mean, you need the trucks outside to do demos and and obviously have room for people to move around. So we're comfortable that the the move to Sand Creek Park on October first is the right one to continue to be over there, and we look forward to everybody showing up.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
One more thing that I spoke with Ms. Lenzmeyer earlier. We have on Friday, early voting starts. And you can do that at the Civic Center, but Ms. Lenzmeyer, do you want to give us an update of how that's going to work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, yes. Absentee voting begins on Friday here in Civic C. There'll be election judges ready to service you. This is the part where you can cast your ballot and fold it and put it in envelopes to be stored in the vault and taken to the county. We'll do that up through that week before the election. And then the week before the election, you can actually cast your ballot right into the machine. We call that direct balloting. So if you're ready to go, we'll be ready for you starting at eight o'clock on Friday.
All right. I'm still shocked that in another week or two, it's October first.
I know.
Chief Piper?
Mayor, council, just a quick update. We had our month, excuse me, weekly meeting up at the new fire station today. And I asked the question is that their timeframe, because obviously with supply chain issues and a lot of other stuff, where is it at? And John Kinghorn said they are still online for a June opening next year. That's their best guess at this point, and the walls are going up quick. And I think within the next week to two, the planks will be going up, and the steel will be going up for the roofs, and it's plugging along. So June of next year is still the target. And as Councilmember Geisler said, ordering stuff out and making sure it comes in on time, of course, will be a factor, and we hope it all continues on the right path. So just a quick update.
Very good. All right.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
So I hate to bring up kind of some sad news, but it was two years and a month ago when the city of Coon Rapids lost a police officer unexpectedly. Greg Koss passed away. And the city of Anoka unfortunately had a similar experience just last week. And Officer Eric Grubner passed away unexpectedly. As everybody in the city of Coon Rapids knows, these two police departments work extremely closely together. They share a border, but it's much more than that because they share a community and they are friends. And and they work extraordinarily collaboratively together. There will be a funeral tomorrow for Officer Grubner in Anoka, and there will be a final patrol procession sometime around noon to twelve thirty. And the public is invited to attend. So if you are a supporter of law enforcement in Anoka County or in Coon Rapids, or if you know people in the Anoka Police Department, they're hurting just like our police department was hurting a little over two years ago. And so you're welcome to attend that procession that will go down Main Street, and then I think it will come up Seventh Avenue to Harrison so that it goes back down Harrison, past the police department, and ends at the Veterans Memorial. And so our condolences to the city of Anoka and their police department and to the Grubner family.
Yep, and an appreciation to the Coon Rapids Police Department for stepping up and handling their calls and handling everything so that Anoka can, that the Anoka PD can truly mourn and do what they need to do to honor Eric.
Absolutely.
All right. Do we have some chipper business to end with now after that? All right, well, maybe we don't deserve any.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
There we go. Motion by Geisler. Oh, I can hear you.
He's quiet like a mouse over here.
All right. Motion by Geisler, second by Griscovia. Act to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.